Y'all ready? Y'all ready for this? That was for you. Okay. No, no, I'm just saying it was just a little different, that's all. All right, here we are for the regular meeting. I almost read the top here. Regular meeting of the Yuba City City Council for August 17th, 2021. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued Executive Order N 721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N 080821 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls. While still meeting state transparency requirements, the public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in the meeting? The meeting is utilizing Zoom for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment on your device. Questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during the meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on during the public comment of each item. Staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to invite the esteemed city attorney to read our closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have four items for closed session. Closed session item A, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives are Dave Vaughn, City Manager Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director Michael Jarvis, SAWW. Employee organizations are Yuba City Police Officers, Police Sergeants, Yuba City Fire Management, and Police Wardenman Managers. Closed session item B is threats to public services or facilities pursuant to government code section 54957A, consultation with the city attorney and/or Yuba City Fire Chief, Chief of Police, Director of Public Works, IT Managers, and City Manager. Item C is conference with legal counsel potential litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D11K. Item D is six-month performance evaluation of City Manager pursuant to government code section 54957.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on these items?
No public comment.
No public comment, then we will adjourn to a closed session. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
All right, this evening, we are fortunate to have Pastor Greg Mansour of a ventured church. He will be leading our invocation inspiration, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. LeBlu. Please rise.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you for the gift of life and for the blessing of living in this wonderful community. We live in challenging times as we continue to deal with the realities of COVID-19 and all that surrounds it in our society. Provide comfort and care to all those who have been affected by this virus, and may our health professionals, hospital workers, and first responders be blessed beyond measure for their service and sacrifice for our city. Watch over our teachers and students as they begin a new school year. Keep them safe and healthy, and may the doors of our schools remain open. In the midst of the tension we feel in our nation today, we pray that we might all experience the peace that is available to us through the finished work of Jesus on the cross and be united as one nation under God. Thank you, Lord, for these elected officials. Please grant them wisdom and discernment as they serve our city and make decisions that affect so many. All authority is ordained by you, God, and we pray that these council members, along with their families and their staffs, would be blessed for their service to us. It's not an easy time to be an elected official, and the strains of leadership are strong in this season. Give them understanding, give them insight, give them calm in all the matters that are before them. As a community, we seek your continued provision. May your word and your spirit empower and enable every citizen, family, church, school, business, and organization. We rest in your promises, and we trust in your love and grace. We pray these things in the matchless name of Jesus, the name above all names, and the only name by which all may be saved and blessed in this world and in the next. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the invocation, and thank you for leading the pledge. Okay, agenda modifications, approval of the agenda, council, any agenda modifications? Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, anything? All right, we'll go ahead and move on. We have public communication, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chambers. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided for him, or her. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. One thing that I don't see on here before we get going is report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. So, appearance of interested citizens, did you want to make a comment before we got started?
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, and this is just a reminder that should be done every so often. So, by way of reminder, members of the public have a right to address the city council at regular and special meetings. The right to express one's views in a public place is fundamental to a free society. This right is not absolute, however, and speech such as slander or which violates another person's right to privacy may expose the speaker to personal liability. The fact that there is a right to address the city council should not be taken to conclude that the city agrees with or condones the statements being made. Finally, just as a reminder, this is a limited public forum, which means that the city can legally impose time and similar constraints on its speakers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We do have a written request from Chad Lizardo to speak. I do not see Mr. Lizardo in the room, however. Okay, I have a couple speaker cards. First up will be Heather Essman.
Hi, so this is Heather Essman, 2020 Lincoln Road, and I am on agenda item number three. I just wanted to make sure that the other, I had a discussion with the mayor and with the vice mayor and the other three, just to associate the name with the face. I'd like to thank you for your consideration, as well as the city's recommendation, and if you ever have any questions myself or what my motives are or anything like that, you're welcome to contact me, or you can ask right now. I know it's not the forum, but...
Any questions for Ms. Heather? I will tell you that both the mayor, excuse me, the vice mayor and myself were very impressed. Thank you for your interest in the city. I know you're going to bring a lot of passion, and, I mean, in a very good way, and a lot of energy as well, so we're glad, assuming we get past item three here, which I'm sure we will, we welcome you aboard.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Roy, I hope I'm going to get the last name right, Malai?
Meli.
Meli?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm trying to make this as brief and succinct as possible. Thank you. Twelve years ago, I had my first solar system put on my house. Two months ago, I had a secondary solar system put on my house. And upon having that put on my house, something was observed by the electricians who did it, led better. And my grievance with the inspector and the permit fees is, I don't mind paying for something that is done properly, like anybody else should do, but this was a potential danger to putting my house on fire. I have some photos that I printed out I would like to hand to you at the end of my speech, so you could look at what I'm talking about. And also, an observation of the wire that was put on and the wire that should have been put on. Leave both of them here. So, in doing this, I found out there was a potential fire danger to my house, which is with all solar systems. And what I want to know is how well are our city inspectors educated on the building codes to let something like this happen, not only to my house, but to anybody else's house, or having the fire department at my house? The connectors had melted, the wires were fraying, and if I hadn't had this new system put on, I don't know what could have potentially happened. So, that's what I want to speak to you about, and in the future, are our inspectors going to be educated, because, you know, solar and solar is a popular thing, and this is a danger. We don't need any more fires. And if there would be a way of compensating me for either my permit fee or the extra money I had to spend, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I just would like a response from you, either an email, which I left on this paper, or my home address, which is on here. All my information is on there, and at least get a response from one of you. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we can do one better than an email or a phone call. We can have a meeting with you at your convenience from our building department. I'll be happy to work with you, our city staff. Obviously, we're a little less than qualified to answer your questions in regards to, you know, the installation and the inspection, but we sure will follow up with you.
One last thing, on either inspection, none of the inspectors got up on the roof to check the wiring. All they did was check the panel, I'm losing my words here, that regulates the electricity. Okay? That's all.
I appreciate you raising your concern to us, and like I said, Mr. Moody is actually a person that will meet with you quickly outside there and get your information, and we'll be following up with him, sir. That would be perfect. Yeah, thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Thomas Burns, and I live at 1885 Green Gate Street. So, I want to address, I almost wore my little yellow star, you know, that shows I'm a Jew, you know, like the Nazis used to make them do, because that's how I feel about this trash that's going on in America today. And I'm going to speak about it here in the city councils, and I'm still curious as to what the city is going to allow regarding private business that's open to the public, and that is the key word right there, because all the saber rattling that's going on is, well, we're going to segregate out these non-vaxxers. Yeah, we're going to segregate our society into different classes, and that is not the American way. So, I'm going to keep pounding that, and unless you're living in a vacuum, you should have been able to see the handwriting on the wall. Now, for me, I already knew months ago that there would be another, let's say, biological warfare attack, and I believe that's what's going on. So, my question to the city is, what will be allowed in this city as far as people entering public places and public businesses that are open to the public? So, and I want to commend Sutter High School and their school district out there, because they said, "It's your choice, and you don't have to wear a mask if you don't want to." Praise God that somebody stood up for what was right. So, thank you to Sutter. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else in the audience? How about online?
No public comment.
Thank you, Sierra. All right, next item is our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, the staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak on the remaining consent calendar items?
No public comment.
Okay. Bring the consent calendar back to the council for potential action?
Through the mayor, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by councilperson Esmondola, to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar has been approved. Welcome, Heather. Business items. Item number seven, interim host fee agreement with Recycling Industries Incorporated, located at 140 Epley Drive, south of Lincoln Road, east of Garden Highway. This will be presented by our Development Services Director, Mr. Ben Moody.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. A little rusty here, it's been a while since I've been here, so nice to see everybody. So, what do I have before you? So, before you tonight is the interim host fee agreement for Recycling Industries. And so, as many of us know, Recycling Industries is a operation down in the southeast part of the city, in the industrial area off of Epley. There are, we've had an use permit in 2008, and then since then, 2017, 2018, they've gone through a use permit amendment to upgrade to a large volume transfer processing solid waste permit. And then in February 2019, city council ultimately approved an use permit for the facility with modified conditions of approval. And with those modified conditions of approval, there is 59 conditions, plus or minus there, and with them, one of the key components was entering to a host fee agreement. And so, with that host fee agreement, so since that time, so since February 2019, they've been working onsite to constructing the buildings. They relocated an existing 1,800-square-foot metal building. They've constructed a new 21,000-plus facility, building, and then they've done a lot of site and grading work for the, for just the flow of traffic, and then they've also installed the scale house. And so, where they've at, where they are at right now is that the majority of the work is done. The inspections pending, final punch list items for the majority of the work is complete, and with that, we've been working with them, really specifically over the last few months to pinpoint the terms of this host fee agreement. And so, with that, what we've done is, to establish a host fee agreement, it's more complicated than just throwing out a number in order to really establish a nexus and what the cost of operating and cost of business is there to the city in having them host them in our city, what the wear and tear is on the roads, the noise, what that is. And so, we've contracted with industry experts to develop that nexus for us, but also to recognize that they're ready to get going in operations and to work out some of these terms of the agreement. We were proposing an interim agreement, and so this agreement before you tonight is an interim agreement that has a 12-month cap that basically, and it's proposing to set the dollar amount at $4.40 for every ton of garbage that is transferred to a landfill, that's deposited in landfill. So, it's not green waste, so if anything comes into the facility and then ultimately ends up in a landfill, of that 100 tons per day would then be charged a $4.40 per ton fee that would then come back to the city for the host fee amount. And so, with that, and so with this agreement, it's really nailing down the specifics of the accounting, the term, and then setting this timeline for the city to work additionally with Recycling Industries, to work through that nexus with our three, our consultant, and then also with the city as far as exactly what the fair rate is. And so, currently, it's proposed at $4.40 per ton. There's definitely recognition from both sides that that value will change, most likely. It might change, it will change, but there has been discussion that until that nexus is done, this doesn't set it in stone. And so, based on just rough numbers of operating six days per week, hitting the cap at 100 tons per day, and then putting in a little contingency factor on what's recycled versus what's not, you're looking at about $120,000 a year at the current proposal. So, with that, the owners, the representatives are here in the audience to help add anything regarding the agreement or the project status, and additionally, I'm here to answer any questions. But really, what's before you tonight is to consider the agreement that was required as a condition of approval to, for the host fee, and with this option to do an interim host fee that would basically be the final hurdle, one of the final hurdles to get up and operating for the site.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Through the mayor. Mr. Moody, the one question that I have, as you alluded to earlier, you know, the 59 conditions that are associated with this, this one's not the final one tonight. There's still other conditions that has to be met before they are given the certificate, anyway, so they can start up and run, correct? We're not quite there yet. We're getting close, I realize.
They are really close, and so we've gone through those conditions of approval. There are some items regarding a noise study that has to be done within 10 days of operations, but we've reached out to the Fragment, we've reached out to the LEA as far as the terms of what they are going to enforce and implement, but so there's a few different things. They have multiple building permits, site and grading permit, the relocate permit, the new building permit, and then the scale house. Two of those permits are on the punch list. I think the relocate building and the site and grading, they're right there with minor stuff as far as adjusting the countertop height and maybe a little electrical and accessibility that we're working through, but they're real close. With that, we're not going to ultimately give them the final to the building until the host fee is approved, and then also, we've cross-checked, dotted our i's, and gone through every one of the items. But my staff has been working, they've contacted Fragment, they've contacted the LEA, and we're real close.
Okay, I just was just curious, because I know that it was a long process we went through, and I appreciate you guys working together with the community and doing that, but it's a balance between the two. We got to make sure that you guys have a good working environment, the community has a good relationship with you there. I was just curious to where we're at on the 59 conditions to make sure that we're in good shape, so.
So, yeah, I did the review, and I've had staff done another review, and besides finaling out the punch list items with the building and just confirming that all the other agencies are good, you know, that they've given their final approval, we're real close.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Invite the Coonans, the operators, to the podium if you'd like to add anything before I open up for public comment? Yeah?
My name's David Kuhn. Thank you. My name's David Kuhn, and I'm the general manager, and I have my father here, and my mom got all excited, so she came by too, and my sister flew in from Kentucky because she got all excited, but she just happened to be here, so. It's my older sister, so it's kind of like two moms, you know? So, hey, we're just ready to get going. Like Mr. Moody said, we've got, we're just a couple little i's to dot and t's to cross, and we're ready to go. This allows go, and looking forward to reach out to the chamber and have a business after hours and a ribbon cutting and get you all out to come see and drive through, and if I close my eyes, you can even peel out inside of the thing before we put garbage in there, so, you know? But it's pretty fun, it's ready to go. I think we've cleaned up the neighborhood, we've lit it up. If you go by at night, I will tell you, it's like a casino. We have, it's all LED, and I think it's going to enhance the area down there, and it is kind of, there's issues going on there at night, but not as much now that we've got the lighting, electricity, and it's been pretty good, so. Anyway, look forward to moving to the next step, and appreciate you at least getting us to here so we can get to the next step and get going. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you take off, anybody from the council?
Through the mayor, I'd just like to thank you for the sticking to the plan and really working in those last couple of years, even under the terrible conditions that we've lived in, but you've managed to pull this together and with our team. It's exciting, as a council member for myself personally, it's really fulfilling to see projects that we talked about two and a half years ago or less, that they're actually happening. And so, and it's a good thing for the community. I know it's not going to be an easy process for you to get, you know, set your business going and people recognizing. You probably might get a huge demand, so, you know, be prepared for that, but I appreciate the fact that you have worked with our team and really made this get to the place where it's going to actually happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I would echo those. Welcome through the, or thank you for hanging in through the process. We're looking forward to coming down to your meet and greet, and, you know, the added security around the area and the other things that you guys are providing, plus the additional service to our citizens is much appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Look forward to it.
Yep.
And I'll make a big cookie. Just make sure we'll make a bunch of big cookies for you.
Yeah, okay.
So, you'll get the big cookie on the night. All right.
Do you have any public comment?
So, this place happens to be in my neighborhood, I'm right down the street. I'm curious for the council, like, it seems to me there's a lot of hoops that these guys have to go through. Is that normal? And is the money that he's going to have to pay actually going to go to the roads? I mean, that's what it's for, right? Impact for the roads? And then, I'm concerned also about trash, because I kind of like to have a clean city. I'm sick of a dirty city. And the road I travel every day to work is dirty, and you know the causes of a good deal of that is the homeless, and he spoke on that, too, the homeless. But I drive down there quite often, and there is also another business that went in down there, and they lit it up real good, too, just down the street from me, and it seems to be that's the case anymore. We have to light up the whole city to try and keep the homeless out of our hair. But I did, I want to say this, that prior to the renovation, and I've watched that take place, it looked pretty like there was a lot of trash around your guys' perimeter, and lately, it got cleaned up, so I hope it can stay clean. I mean, you're in the trash business, and, you know, it would be nice to keep a clean perimeter.
Thank you. I will say that I think that that industry that they are in is pretty heavily regulated, so I'm sure that's part of the conditions that they had to deal with. And as far as funds designated for roads, I think this council is very, very familiar with the fact that we have a lot of road issues to take care of and not a lot of road money to spend, so any money that we can get towards roads, I'm really comfortable and confident that this group will make sure it's used for that purpose.
Okay. Anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving an interim host fee agreement with Recycling Industries Incorporated, and regarding the material recovery and the transfer station, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second. I have a motion by councilperson Esmondola, second by councilperson Harris. All those in favor signify by... all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, item seven passes the interim agreement, thank you. Item number eight, heavy equipment lease financing, this will be presented by Mr. Spencer Morrison, who is our finance director, thanks for flying in from Kentucky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, joining me tonight on teams is Christian Springer with NHA Advisors, and you can see Christian's image there, nice wave, thanks, Christian. So, we introduced this concept back in July, the last, our very last meeting, at that time, we were talking about purchasing, and you approved purchasing a type one pumper and a ladder truck, so today we're going to add to that a VACON sewer truck, a sewer jet, and a 12-yard dump truck. NHA Advisors did conduct the RFP for the lease, for the actual lease proposal, and we are talking about a 10-year lease, and we have sought Sourcewell pricing for the We will be piggybacking Sourcewell for the purchases, I will be purchasing the sewer jet truck from Municipal Maintenance Equipment of Redding, and the dump truck from PB Loader Corp. of Fresno, and we're expecting a delivery of about four to six months. Here's an image, very similar to the sewer jet truck that we currently run, I think maybe, the colors are different, but we are looking at a Kenworth 43,000 GVWR chassis, the cost is about $490,000, and like I say, it's similar to this vehicle that you're seeing now, I think when we see that coiled hose on the front, it looks familiar, like, oh yeah, that's the one. We have a 12-yard dump truck, again, I think you've seen a few of these in our fleet, this will be a 2022 Freightliner with a Cummins engine, 52,000 GVWR chassis, 15-foot, 12- to 14-yard body, at a cost of $150,500, and it should be similar to this photo that we have here. Bank of America leasing terms, the city went out to RFP and received eight competitive bids, all under 3%, Bank of America had the winning bid of 1.44% interest for 10 years, these will be semi-annual payments, $117,235 for the fire equipment, and $36,107 for the public works equipment. The lease is structured to optimize benefit to the city, the city retains early prepayment option, it, there are level annual payments to assist with budget predictability, the repayment term is tied to the use of the life of the vehicles being purchased, and fixed rate, fixed interest rate, and the City of UBS City will own the equipment. Recommendation is to adopt the resolution authorizing a master equipment lease purchase agreement and separate schedules and agreements, that was the 125 pages of backup to this staff report, adopt a resolution to award the purchases, and authorize appropriation of $640,517.25 in the vehicle replacement fund. And with that, can Christian or myself answer any questions?
Right, any questions for Mr. Morrison, other than the 120-plus-page financial documents?
It was a pleasure to review every page.
Okay, none from the council? All right, how about from the public, anybody want to comment or have a question regarding Mr. Morrison's presentation? Seeing none, how about online?
No public comment.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a master equipment lease purchase agreement and separate schedules and agreements, also to adopt a resolution to award the purchases and authorize appropriation of $640,417.25 in the vehicle replacement fund.
And through the mayor, I'm sorry, was that a clarification of $640,517.25? Councilmember? Yes, thank you very much.
Second, items A, B, and C.
All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kirchner, and a second by Vice Mayor Shaw to adopt items A, B, and C as recommended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item eight passes unanimously. Moving on to item number nine, fire management memorandum of understanding, this will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Dave Vaughn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, I do want to make one note in the staff report, under the analysis, it is supposed to represent July 3, 2021, not July 3, 2020, so it's a typo, and I'll take full responsibility for that. So we've been in negotiations with fire management for now about a month and a half, the memorandum of understanding includes a one-time distribution of $4,000 per eligible member, it also takes the opportunity to benchmark the battalion chiefs at 15% above fire captains, it also benchmarks the fire marshal at 7.5% over the fire captains as well, term of the agreement is July 3, 2021, which is the correction of the term I just provided you, through June 30, 2024, physical impact, the proposed changes will result in a net increase in cost of $48,500 for years 2021, 2022 for the general fund. Recommendation is adopt a resolution approving a three-year memorandum of understanding with the fire management group, and approve a supplemental appropriation of $16,400 to the FY 21, 22 adopted general fund budget, adopted general fund budget.
Any questions from the council to the city manager on item 10, excuse me, 9? Seeing none, any comment from the public? Seeing none there, online?
No public comment.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving a three-year memorandum of understanding with fire management group, and approve a supplemental appropriation of $16,400 for the physical year 21, 22, adopted general fund budget.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by councilperson Esmondola on item 9, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, item 9 passes unanimously. Future agenda items, this is an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that have come up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date, are there any other comments relating to the agenda items that may have come in during the meeting? Hold on for a second, anything from the council first? Perfect, Sierra?
No public comment.
Okay. Reports and communications, following reports and communication items are provided for council's info, information, no action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. Tonight's leadoff hitter is councilmember Harris.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, two scheduled meetings for regional housing, one was council, one we discussed, among other things, but they're working to expand their purview and develop new housing opportunities for folks in the community, so we discussed those, new properties, it still hasn't come into the public purview yet, but that is in the works. UBSutter Arts, they continue to be extremely busy and prevalent in the community, not the least of which is our pending film festival, the first annual for UBSutter, submissions are due September 19, and the festival itself will be October 3, I believe they already have either six or 11 entries in that. I am working on the side with some folks from Seroptimists, not the least of which would be Sandy Drone from Happy Viking, regarding human trafficking in our area and our community, so more to follow on that, we're working on trying to figure out a way without stepping on any toes for the folks who are trying to put these people behind bars, we want to, we also want to help get the word out to the community so they can report it and try to prevent some of this stuff from happening to begin with, so there's more to follow on that. SACOG took July off, and I'm going to let Councilwoman Esmondola, as the vice chair of SUBUCA, go over what we talked about there, other than that, we're good, welcome, happy to be back.
Good to have you back, all right, next up is councilmember Esmondola.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm looking forward to the Film Commission, Councilman Harris, that's a really cool, yeah.
Go for it.
Not that, not that sophisticated, so, attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District meeting, a lot of conversation about the air quality, unfortunately because of the fires that we're all experiencing. The North Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group, we have our, actually our first meeting next Wednesday, I think is the 25th, I hope that we end up having that meeting, it's been canceled a few times, not enough agenda items, which kind of surprises me with all the other issues that are going on. Attended the Regional Water Agency Advocacy Program, which is the state group that we meet to talk about legislation and other ways to help our state legislators in understanding what the region and what we're doing with water, and any information that I get, I usually forward that on to our city manager, so they're up to date on all the current things related to water, and the amount of funding that is becoming available to cities to help pay some of those overdue payments of water, that's available to us perhaps, so, but again, the conversation, and if gentlemen, if you have any other input, I'd be happy to take that on, to take it, about infrastructure, and trying to find monies, you know, for the infrastructure of our water treatment and water programs here in the city. And as Councilwoman Harris mentioned, we had had the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, it was our first meeting in person in a long time, and that was good to be around our region Board of Directors, and a lot of good things are happening within the Flood Control Agency, one of the things is that we had an event to celebrate the removal of the sediment that is happening through the Feather River, and the work and support that Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nielsen have helped in bringing $5 million to our community to help with that particular grant, and Councilman Kirchner attended, he was there, and I appreciate you showing up and supporting, it was a really favorable getting together because it was also talking about sportsmen and fishing, and there's just a lot of really good results within this work that we're going to be doing for the several coming months. As, we, our next meeting for our city internal homeless committee, we're going to meet on the 30th, and we had postponed the last meeting, there's, you know, there's things happening in our community, so we had postponed that meeting, so we're going to meet on the 30th, and so, as a city, we'll meet, and then we're going to meet with a county as well, and bring some recommendations, and hopefully host a workshop here soon, so then we can all be on the same page of this homeless issue that we all experience every day. One thing that, because of these fires, because of change of services sometimes, one thing that our emergency staff, fire and police are working to promote, and I just want to remind folks to make sure that you sign up for your code RED, and it's a really easy process so that you, as a community member, know how to respond if we were to evacuate, or sections of our community to evacuate, and just to stay informed, it's really, really important as a community to be part of the process in any type of emergency. If there's questions related to that, our fire chief and fire staff are here, so you can ask them, or get on our website, actually, it's ubscity.net/ycfd to get into the code RED, so really like to remind folks to take care of yourselves, and take care of your families, and be prepared for any kind of emergency at any case, and my prayers and thoughts are with all the community, with all these fires that have been going on, and I know it's really a difficult time for many families in those circumstances, and I also want to thank our fire staff and our policing for going out there and helping in those very dangerous situations, so I hope that everyone takes care of yourself, and also with this Delta variant, be vigilant and take care of yourself and your families as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, councilmember Kirchner.
Through the mayor, it's been a long time since we've been up here. I'll start off with Gilser, we had some appearance items, we approved to submit excess equipment as surplus by Sutter County General Services Department, we also approved for the Sutter County Development Services Department to purchase district equipment, and then finally authorized Smith &amp; Newell to perform fiscal year 2019, 2020 audit. Mosquito, we had some stuff going on with that, we moved to, they changed health insurance renewal rates beginning January 1, 22, or 22 through December 31, also dental insurance, vision, and then finally, they moved to approve a renewal for the American Mosquito Control Association membership. They did have some activity, though, they received a call from a gentleman in Terre Boina off of Roosevelt, took a picture of a mosquito, he didn't think looked like a mosquito, and it turned out it was a Andes egypti, which is actually, they don't look like regular mosquitoes, they have a certain pattern, I guess, and the problem with that particular mosquito is they, they're known to spread Zika and yellow fever, and so, once that was confirmed, the health officer was informed, their people went out there and sprayed, and they're waiting for the follow-up, how that went, but it did get them, it got them concerned, but it's been, the issue's been addressed. I did participate in Walk a Mile in our shoes, which was on the 24th Casa de Esperanza event at the UBS City Mall, and that is to highlight sexual awareness, sexual assault awareness month, and so the mayor and I were out there doing laps in the mall in fashionable shoes, that was my first opportunity to participate in that. I also participated on the 3rd in National Night Out, which was, which was fun, once again, my first one, I'd like to thank the chief for setting us up with, I hope I pronounce this name right, Erica Brusser?
Brussard.
Brussard.
Close.
Who did an exceptional job, I'm glad she put up with me and my son, we went to several events around town, and thank you once again for that, and chief, your people as well, that was really neat to see the community out and celebrating National Night Out. And lastly, as councilperson Esmondola mentioned, it seems like the whole state's on fire again, and, you know, it's almost like it's becoming the norm, unfortunately, but our thoughts go out to people that have been directly affected by that, I know in the Lake Almanor region, we have many, many members of our community that own property up there, I'm sure everybody in this room knows somebody that was directly affected by that, and still affected by that, our first responders in this community that's participating up there, and some of our groups that have gone up there to help out, the stories that they put on Facebook, it's just a difficult time, so our thoughts go out to the people that have been affected by those fires and are in harm's way, and that's what I got.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmember Harris.
I'm on mine, thank you.
Okay, all right, it has been a while since we met, I've taken a lot of time and focused on my family during the past few weeks, but some things that came up, EDC, we had their quarterly meeting, approved the budget.
EDC, we had their quarterly meeting, approved the budget, the new branding there, and then likewise, they have launched into a pandemic recovery, figuring out how they can also help businesses in our local area with funding sources and such as we come out of the pandemic so that we retain our businesses here. Just a reminder that the Transit Authority met just before the last meeting, but this month, Councilmember Kirchner will be filling in for me, as I will be attending GSEC meetings over the next three days. And then likewise, the RWMA will be bringing forward the new JPA sometime September, October timeframe is when we should see that, so that will be on our radar. The, just on a personal note, one thing I was involved with this past weekend was the event, and we raised, just in the guitars that we auctioned, chief, $11,000 for the K-9 Association to take care of, not to buy the dogs and stuff, but to take care of the animals after they retire and such. So that's huge, and I appreciate all the support there. And then I apologize for missing National Night Out, but I had some personal things I had to take care of, but I know you guys do an awesome job, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Before I get started, Mr. Sean Harris had one other item he wanted to mention?
I just wanted to, I forgot to mention appreciation for the PD and Lieutenant Runyon for taking me out on National Night Out. It was always a very well-attended event, very appreciated, and did a great job, as always, so thank you very much.
All right. I've got kind of a list here, so bear with me. First, had an opportunity to represent the city with Assemblyman Gallagher and Supervisor Carm Baines. Mark Stein Beverages donated a bunch of water for firefighters and fire victims. Speaking of firefighters and fire victims, as well as PD, and it's been mentioned here, we have folks that have been dispatched up to assist up in these fires, and I understand there's another big one brewing now out of El Dorado County. So knowing that it's going to be a long, a long siege this fall, and as Councilwoman Espendola said, you know, just making sure that not only the residents up there, but our folks are taking care of themselves, and our best thoughts with them. I did attend the Gilser meeting along with Councilman Kirchner. He's covered that. Did Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, and I'm very happy this year it wasn't too high of high heels, so my feet survived a lot better. Did do National Night Out, and again, thanks to you, chief, and to Ken Soles and Riggs, the very, very active police dog. Very friendly, though, but very active, even after a day of training. He was still very active. 16 months old, I think, so he's got energy. I wouldn't want to be the bad guy. Had an opportunity to represent the city at a career training education event over in Marysville, part of the board over there that's trying to help with workforce development. You know, we have a lot of jobs here in the city that don't necessarily have the requirement of advanced college degrees, and this is an excellent place. They've got some good programs going on over there, so I was invited to speak and talk about our great city and some of the jobs we have. I want to give a good shout-out here to the Vice Mayor, and John Cassidy, and the rest of the committee. I don't know all the members for the event, and the money that they were raised for the K-9 Association. I know that the Vice Mayor was very involved with what was going on on the stage and helping with that. I also want to thank, he's gone, George was there, too. He was helping out, as well as staff, with some presentations we made to the folks that headlined that and allowed, or provided the opportunity to make the money, and that would be Kaylee Starr, Temecula Road, and of course Tyler Rich. All very good people to meet, and all very generous to give of their time to this event. Couple other things that are going on, and I have a question first, though, is, my phone's blowing up, and I'm hoping that maybe either Mr. Moody or Mr. Vaughn would be kind enough to maybe spill the beans on when Hobby Lobby and Sportsman Warehouse are going to potentially open. I don't have that information, but there's a lot of interest out there.
You know, I definitely, there's a lot of interest I'm hearing on my side, too, and I could follow up with, you know, I'll reach out and get some hard dates. Right now, we definitely have the Hobby Lobby permit for the demolition, and then at the same time, the mall is doing their own permit work for some outside and some of the signs. And so you're seeing a couple of different things go on where the mall's doing a little bit of retrofit and the new sign, monument sign work, and then you have Hobby Lobby doing the demo. But I have, I know, what I do know is that they're pushing hard because there's a blackout window that if they don't open prior to the holiday season, they holds up their opening time. And so I know they're pushing to try to hit the holiday season, but I'll see if I could get more detail for you. And then Sportsman's Warehouse, I know they haven't pulled a permit yet, but I know there's been a lot of preliminary work. We've been talking with the building official on what openings we could add to the buildings and some different work. I don't think there's a lot of work to the building. It's more of a TI improvement where they're changing out, you know, shelving and some of the flooring, and so I'm hoping before Christmas, but I'll follow up with a little bit.
Okay. Thanks.
And they have pulled their license for distributing ammo and guns. That has come through. So that is one thing that they're working on to basically be open before Christmas.
Thank you, Mr., oh, you got a question? No? Oh, okay. Thought you were raising your hand.
I was actually, well, my hand was raised.
Okay. Thank you. The city manager and myself are scheduling a meeting with the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the county administrative officer. There's some interest in some joint projects downtown that we're exploring, and I think that could possibly be something quite beneficial to us. So it's very, very much in the conceptual stage, but we're in the process of meeting with them. I do want to signal that on September 8, there's a couple of events that are occurring. One is just recognizing our old, I shouldn't say old, that's not right, our past mayors in the city at a luncheon, and then they're going to get a tour of the Sutter Theater afterwards, because many of them were involved at the very onset of that. So we'll get them together, and maybe they can tell us how we should be doing our job. I don't know. Maybe we'll see. I don't know. The other thing is on September 8, we will be hosting a workshop, and this is something that will probably raise a lot of interest with folks. We don't know the location yet. We're still working on that. But we'll be holding a workshop on the possibility or the interest in not only selling cannabis here in UBS City, but also cultivation. So that is something that has been raised on and off throughout the years. I think it's, at least for this time, is we actually have applicants, so we need to raise the issue and we need to deal with it. And so that's, the beginning of that is to seek public input, and that process will begin on the 8th of September. The final comment I wanted to make is in regards to the many questions and the many interest in vaccines and masks, et cetera. I'm going to mention that, and in regards to the hospital, we got information this morning from hospital board members that are getting it from the hospital. The hospital's definitely impacted by COVID-19 patients. I'm not saying they're overrun, I'm just saying that they are experiencing a rise in the cases. You know, that part's indisputable. You know, you can say what you want about whether or not it's this or that, but you have some sick people in the hospital, and that does affect the ability for the hospital to continue to deliver its services to folks that have other illnesses. So we're keeping our eye on that, and the city manager is in close contact with Rick Rosson, who is the hospital administrator, and so we'll be kept abreast of that. As it relates to vaccines and vaccine passports and vaccine masks, I think as a city, we are continuing to be extremely vigilant about what's going on around us. There aren't any pending actions that we, as a council, are considering at this particular point in time. There are various different opinions on this council about what should be done, and, you know, obviously, as information presents itself to us, or if things begin to happen that require our interaction or our ability to interact with them, then we will deal with them. But at this particular point in time, we don't have that. There isn't anything out there that's telling us that, for instance, our city workers have to do this, or we're going to require city workers to do that. So if those somehow arise, then we will deal with them as a city. I would like to close the meeting tonight in memory of Shirley Johnson. She was a longtime UBS City dispatcher. And I'll leave it there. This meeting's adjourned.